We'll call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call.
Hilliard.
President.
Leach?
Here.
Menold?
There.
Newman?
Here.
Parrot?
Here.
We have a quorum.
You join me in Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chief, I'd like to move up that presentation now.
Village Board, guests and the crowd here, just wanted to make an announcement that the Morton Police Department hired Connor "Pete" Fish. Connor "Pete" Fish comes to us from the Lewis Town Police Department and just started on Friday as his first day, and we thought we would try something new with having them sworn in here at the Village Board meeting, just so you guys had an opportunity to put a face to a name. So Connor, if you'd like to come up, we will swear in.
Is that in the screen good? I want him on the screen, so.
You please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, Connor "Pete" Fish.
Aye, Connor "Pete" Fish.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support?
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution?
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Illinois.
And the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And that I will faithfully discharge?
The duties of the office of police officer?
The duty of office of police officer.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Just to inform the Board, with the hiring of Officer "Pete" Fish, that does put us to our allotted 22 spots, so we're back to full staff. So that's an accomplishment in itself. Thank you.
And thanks for joining the force, Connor.
It was a pleasure to be here.
We move on to the public hearing.
Public hearing tonight is for case number 21-02. Miller Group USA LLC is seeking a variance for the property located at 139 East Ashland Street. The petitioner seeks variance for ordinance 94-31 relative to the interstate corridor requirements. The variance would allow the reduction in the minimum lot size requirement of one acre to be reduced to .925 acre. This would provide a variance of .075 acre. Also, variance is requested for the required minimum frontage width of 175 feet to be reduced to 160 feet. This would provide a variance of 15 feet.
You have anything else to add?
No, but if I may, since we don't often have Village Board hearings on this, if I may, Your Honor, in the conduct of the public hearing, this would be the point in time at which the petitioner would have their opportunity to address the Board and present their cases. Is there anyone here tonight on behalf of the petitioner who wishes to speak? Ma'am, if you could approach our court reporter and be sworn in by our court reporter before you give your testimonies, it will be presented under oath or affirmation. So if you could raise your right hand.
If you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give, do the truth, hold truth, and not be above the truth.
You can have the podium, ma'am, and this is your opportunity to present.
And welcome to Morton.
Thank you so much. And just to say, we've really enjoyed our time here, just building our new facility and everything. We have the Arby's over at 139. It's really just been a pleasure to work with your community. They've just been wonderful to work with, so I so appreciate that. My name is Heidi McPherson. I'm the business manager for Miller Group. I'm here with my colleague Greg Snodgrass. He's our Director of Operations. And Dan Evans from Millennial Professional Services is also here tonight with us. The property that is in question is just under two and a half acres, and it has the former Pizza Ranch building on it. Earlier this year, as I stated, we built an Arby's on the west side or the 133 side of the lot. We had been at the Circle K building for about 20 years, and we were so happy to be able to get a standalone building that would be our own. We asked for a variance tonight. I'm sorry. I've been talking all day. We asked for a variance tonight so we can divide the property between 133 and 139. What we do typically in our industry is what's called a sale-leaseback. We typically take one of the buildings that we own and we lease it back. We sell it and we lease it back to ourselves. So we sell it to an investor and we lease it back. It's a 20-year lease, triple net, which means that we continue to act as if the property is our own. We pay 100% of property taxes. We do all the maintenance. We do all of the repairs and all of the upkeep of the property. The reason we do that and maintain all of the responsibility of an owner is for an influx of capital. So typically what we do is we would take that capital and invest it back into our company, invest in remodels or perhaps going into a new market. But what we're going to be doing with a vast majority of the funds would be to put it back into our employees. In this market, we really need to have those competitive wages and benefits that we can offer. So that's what we would do if we were to do the sale-leaseback. When we rent to the new owner, it is for 20 years, although, I'm sorry. So the property in question meets all of the setbacks except for down the middle of the property, the green space, the 10 feet on either side. If we were to put that green space easement requirement in, then that pushes over the width of the frontage of the property from 175 feet to 160. And that's right in here. So that's the first variance that we're requesting. And also, when we draw the 160-foot property line, it diminishes our required acreage. So we're asking for that variance as well. So all, like I said, that we're asking for is a slight abbreviation of the 160 feet and for the frontage width requirement and for the acre lot. I also wanted to add that we are more than willing to write any right-of-way or easement agreements that would be required by the village between both of the properties. We currently do have a right-of-way agreement with Steak 'n Shake, which is on the north side of our property. So Greg and Dan and I are here if you have any questions.
Craig, you've been involved in this. You have some info you can give us on this or anything?
Yeah, and I've met with several of you. Obviously, we've worked with Heidi and Greg and Dan for quite some time with the new Arby's and then this, so always appreciate them sitting down with us and explaining their plans. So I really don't have anything to offer other than I think it'll work to do this. Obviously, we always like to have frontage to the right-of-way. This one's unique in the fact that the interstate right-of-way is 175 foot. I don't believe one's been granted before, so this would be a little newer here. The one thing is there is a shared access easement already, so that easement along the north would still access both properties. So other than that, I mean, I think it works. As far as the process, though, and I've worked more with your attorney, Bernie, Brad and I, on the process, so if you approve this tonight, you would be approving the variance. Dan would proceed with the plat of survey, and I think their staff would proceed with some engineering. They'd submit a plan for a permit, and we would review that through site plan review and, you know, see the improvements through before we recorded the plat of survey, if that makes sense, kind of the process of how this would work. Couple little concerns, you know, and we've worked through it with them, and we're very fortunate to work with them, because I think on this property, the relationship's going to be a lot better than what we dealt with in the past with a lot of flooding issues, a lot of things not taken care of. You know, stormwater detention is a big one that would be shared a little bit between both properties, so that's something I worked with Pat a little bit to get a detention easement so that we could, at least the two parties could point at each other and they could get on the other person's property to maintain the stormwater. That'd probably be the main concern, but I think we can work out those details. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions. I know Brad would, too.
Okay. Appreciate that. Any of the trustees have some questions?
Yes, sir. I'd had conversation with Brad earlier, and I do believe that there had been some previous things.
Okay.
And Brad, do you have that?
The Morton Village Center extended. There are some variances for acreage and lot width over there as well in the past.
And very similar size variances?
Yeah, actually similar. It went from one acre to .933 and the width from 175 to 150. So that would be like the OSF, Urville, or whatever that may be called now. That will strip those lots right through there.
Staying corrected, but yeah, in the area there along where the new Pizza Ranch is, yeah.
Yes.
And that was done not that long ago, since I've been here, too.
Yes. But you're correct, there isn't any over in that area that we're talking about now.
Just one quick question. I think you answered it, but I wanted to make sure I understand correctly. So it's going to go, if we approve the variance now, then it still has to go through site plan review, and the plat will not be recorded until it passes site plan review. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
And it would not go through the subdivision process either, just go through our office, through, you know, site plan review and plat of survey.
Do you understand what that means?
I do, yes, sir.
Okay. And then on your request for the variances, you have, you stated where you would like to potentially put offices in the old Pizza Ranch area. You stated on Page 5 and 6 both, and I guess I was wondering, do you see the building staying, or are you going to change the building that's there?
Right, yes. Thank you for that question. So this is kind of what we had in mind. It would maintain the same building. We would keep the same building, and we would just keep all of the walls. Everything would maintain and stay in place, and we would just structure the interior slightly, adding a large conference room in the center. The side, which is currently the kitchen, would all become storage for our company, and the rest would become our corporate offices. We have about seven people who work for us.
Any other questions? Can we get a motion?
I'm going to approve in a second.
Anyone have a question? Not, call the roll.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Leach?
Yes.
Menold?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. I've heard nothing but good things about your corporation working with those here in Morton, so we have confidence in you.
Thank you so much. I feel the same about you. Thank you so much.
The next thing on the agenda is a consent agenda, approval of the minutes for the regular meeting October 4th, 2021, and approval of the bills.
I'm going to approve in a second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Hilliard.
Yes.
Leach?
Yes.
Menold?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And I've been informed I missed public comments. Anybody in the audience who'd like to make a public comment?
Good evening, Mayor, Trustees, Staff. Leanne Brown with the Morton Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development Council. Excited to report back on Pumpkin Festival. We had an incredible festival. I know on a meeting that I wasn't here, comments were made, so I appreciate those comments. A lot of participation and support certainly from Village, Police, and Fire. And definitely, as we say often, certainly takes the Village to host this, and all of us truly do come together and host this wonderful event. With that, next Tuesday is National Pumpkin Day, so we will be celebrating our festival give-back. We had our chamber board meeting today and went over our approvals for our give-back and ready to make that public announcement of all the great groups and organizations that help us host and the financial give-back that they will receive, and then our community give-back project. So stay tuned for next Tuesday for those announcements. And whether you came out and bought an ice cream cone or other pumpkin food, participated in an event, help us host the festival, were a sponsor, volunteer, this is why we were able to successfully give back to many organizations and a community project. So thanks again to the Village team, Police, Fire for all your help. It really was a great festival. Big M, our carnival provider, had their biggest year ever here in our community, and certainly a year for them to have that after no operations happening in 2020 for them. So that was an exciting year. Also upcoming this Friday, October 22nd, will be Trick or Treat Main Street. We have well over 40 businesses, organizations, that will be downtown with their doors open out on the sidewalk in Memorial Plaza and at Church Square in partnership with Place. There'll be their food trucks and activities at Church Square across from Jefferson School. So come downtown and enjoy that great event this Friday, 4 to 6. And then next week, we have a business after-hours. Fun to get back to some of these activities. Nixon and Great Harvest will be teaming up to host a business after-hours on October 28th. So swing by and enjoy visiting with those businesses. And then we also have our historical plaques. So each year, we try and install a couple historical plaques to activate the history map that we have online, and hopefully these will arrive soon, but two that we will be installing, one at Village Hall to share the story of the post office, and another one at Roth Grain to share the story of the agriculture and the Roth Grain operation as a part of our community. So we don't have a date yet, but those plaques should be arriving soon, and we'll set some install plans and celebrate those historical plaques. So with that, thank you again. Thanks again to our community, Nestle, and many others for a wonderful, successful Pumpkin Festival.
Thanks, Leanne. I have nothing tonight, Village Clerk.
I do have something tonight.
Okay.
I just wanted to make an announcement that the Junior Football League of Central Illinois is having their annual championships here at Morton High School and the Morton JFL Fields this Sunday. All the games start at 9:00 AM, and there's the best talent in the Midwest coming to our town.
Oh, great.
So you're all welcome if you would like to attend.
Thank you. Village Administrator?
I have a couple items tonight, Your Honor. The first of which is a recommendation from the Business District for a building improvement grant. This grant would be for Hub &amp; Spoke. If you're not familiar with that, that is a temporary office facility. It's actually directly across the street from our office. They are looking to expand. The owner purchased the building next to him, and they're looking to expand their operations into that building. So he's applied for a grant for 117 North Main. The total project cost for the exterior portion is $41,054.5. So the maximum of grant was approved for a recommendation by the Business District Commission for $10,000, and they're looking to replace, remove and replace the exterior facade with a similar color scheme to what the Morton Community Foundation did with their building. It'll be a gray and a black matte trim and very modern-looking. He's doing a great business over there. He said he has a waiting list for people to use, you know, with this COVID brought about, the work at home, but there's a lot of families who that doesn't really work too well, so a lot of people come in and rent just a temporary office to work out of or just a desk so that they can have maybe some peace and quiet. So their recommendation is for approval for this grant.
We have a motion.
I so move that we approve it.
Second.
Questions?
Call the roll.
Menold?
Yes.
Leach?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Hilliard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next item I have tonight is just an update on our first six months of the fiscal year, May through October, what we've done in sales tax. I sent you out all a memo on this, and it's also included in the packet. We have received just over $2,690,000 in sales tax in the first six months. This compares to the first six months of last year was only $2,140,000. So it's an increase of almost $550,000 in the first six months. I did indicate in here that we, you know, on the online sales, we did lose the used tax portion of that that we had received in the past, but that would only be about $67,000 of that. So net, we're still up about $482,000 in the first six months from last year. So it's an amazing testament to the people in Morton.
That it is.
That's all I have tonight.
All right. Thank you. Chief of Police?
I have one item tonight, Your Honor. In your packets should be the payroll expenses for the Morton Pumpkin Festival, and I'm requesting approval of the transfer of $7,510.46 from the Tourism Tax Fund back into the General Fund to cover those expenses.
So move in a second.
Any questions? It is down from last year, but there's also going to be some Public Works employees that took the place of the auxiliary, which I think is in the neighborhood of three to five or something.
Just over 5,000.
Right. So it's actually, we're probably $3,3500 above last year. So. All right, we got a motion in a second? Call the roll.
Menold?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Hilliard?
Yes.
Leach?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Corporation Counsel?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Director of Public Works?
Several items tonight, Your Honor. One formal, one, and then a couple updates. First in front of you, Item A, this is an IDOT resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code.
Do you have a motion?
It will get approved in a second.
It's that time of year, this is to appropriate $215,000 in MFT funds to purchase salt for calendar year 2022.
Any questions?
Just one question. Are we allowed to also include the diesel fuel we use in the trucks?
I don't believe you actually can reimburse yourself for fuel, but you can reimburse yourself like a rent for equipment.
Okay.
But we've never done that, I don't believe.
Okay.
Any other questions? Call the roll.
Newman?
Yes.
Hilliard?
Yes.
Menold?
Yes.
Leach?
Yes.
And Parrot?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next update, the mayor asked me to give a brief update on our water treatment plant upgrade that was bid out last year at $10.848 million. We're at the halfway point, are pretty close thereof. It's a 550-day project with the completion of June 22nd, 2022. I'm happy to report that we're on schedule to meet this deadline. As far as costs, we're at about 54% paid to Williams Brothers. Williams Brothers to date's done a great job. I see no reason why we shouldn't finish. Obviously, things may come up, but they've done a good job. J.J. Breakers &amp; Sons, a sub, doing all the masonry, excellent to work with. I would also like to recognize our staff who's had to work in this mess for approaching a year here soon. It's difficult to run a plant and your personal vehicle showing up and in a mess all day. So they've struggled through it but have been positive and look forward to the end at some point next year. Stan Gruber's the inspector. I always say our inspection here is second to none, so having a good inspection helps make a good contractor an excellent contractor, and this one's no different. As far as what you see out there, I sent some of you a picture of kind of a drone shot of it, but there's four buildings under construction. Those, I hope here in the next several weeks, the back building, the bioreactor, which is the main reason why we did this plant, that should be enclosed here in the next several weeks and have the roof on. So all four buildings should be enclosed so that we can start working on them when the winter weather hits. We'll still have work to do at the end as we work on improvements to Plant 2 and 3 inside and demolition of the reaction basins that are out there, too, before we hopefully fire up the plant, you know, May of next year is our hope at this point. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Mayor did ask me also on water quality, too, so, you know, citizens have been asking him and others, you know, is this going to change the water quality? And I'd also like to give the opportunity for Trustee Newman to speak up, too. He's very familiar with all this, but again, the priority with this job was to remove the ammonia in the water, and that's the biological process in the bioreactor, the big tall building at the back. So as far as water quality, there will be a big improvement, but those main improvements would be maintaining a chlorine residual throughout the distribution system, hopefully a little less flushing in the future, just an improved system. With that, a lot of the water characteristics probably won't change, you know, so for the normal person, they probably won't see a whole lot of difference, but we will see a lot of difference where we're at, and I think the EPA will appreciate those improvements, too. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
It's the changeover process. I mean, do you turn the old one off and the new one on? Do you bring them together so they, you know, it's not rapid change? What happens?
Yeah, so it's two plants out there, and we've disconnected some of that through the wells, and eventually, once that project process turns on, yeah, it'll start. I mean, it's kind of fine-tuning to get to that point. You know, there's a lot of other upgrades out there, too. The building in the front's a new high-service building. We got a new high-service pump, which we're very fortunate. But yeah, there'll be a point at which we pretty much turn the new one on, if that makes sense. And then we'll go to the next phase, which is shortly turning off Plant 1 and those things, too. But I mean, that won't happen in a split second, but it should happen fairly quick. So as winter hits, we'll start heading inside. Electrical, there's a lot of improvements within the existing plant. We're excited. I will say again, this is just the first of many communities that will be looking at most likely biological processes to remove ammonia, especially those in the Mohammed Aquifer. To note, Eureka has done the same pilot process, our project is ours, with Corrine Associates. I'm not sure where they're at, but I think they're moving slowly towards making similar upgrades at their plant, and we anticipate more going in that direction.
Any questions? Comments? Not? Thank you.
And then I had one other update, just briefly. I sent a note today. We've been getting a lot of questions on natural gas and increasing prices, increasing energy prices. So I did update our website, our Facebook page, put together an update today that basically is kind of our perspective on how we see the increasing prices, why we believe they're increasing, what we're doing to protect against those prices, and update on the polar vortex event that people keep asking where that's at, and then how will you individually be affected, not infected, affected by your bills. So just briefly, if you're watching the news, I mean, it seems like it's on the news every night, but what's causing the increase in natural gas prices? The biggest thing affecting natural gas prices right now is the export of liquefied natural gas. In short, you know, and we weren't exporting in '15. We started exporting LNG in '16. Asia and Europe markets have a huge demand right now, so we are exporting our country the maximum that we can get to ship to get overseas at rates that are four to six times about, you know, of what we're seeing gas prices here. So that will, I think, continue. It's kind of like the, you know, we're chasing our tail a little bit, but that's why we think, you know, if you Google this, if you look on the news, that's what's driving our price. That's what puts putting pressure on our prices that have been historically low. That's what puts, putting pressure on our prices that have been historically low to keep driving those up. So, um, there's been a lot of people, hopefully we'll see this in the future, of, of the president, the administration, put limitations on exports to hopefully control that, but to date, um, right or wrong, that hasn't been done. Um, so we'll continue to see that. So because of that, uh, we have fixed or hedged sixty percent of our, um, our load from November to March, our monthly loads. There's an additional ten to fifteen percent, 'cause our storage is full, that will cover us maybe up to about seventy-five percent. And we're looking to maybe get up to ninety percent as we continue to monitor these trends. Obviously, weather, I'm, I'm feeling more like a meteorologist the last couple of days, but, um, if the weather continues to stay warm, that will really help us. Uh, our country will continue to improve our storage levels, which will really help us through the winter. So let's cross our fingers for good, warm weather. Again, I, I would like to stress again, I dealt with this through the polar vortex. People say, why don't you hedge a hundred percent? Well, you don't hedge a hundred percent of your load because if warm weather hits, we have to still buy that gas. So you're gonna be in the same position as everybody else, and we'll be basically selling high-priced, uh, high-priced gas at a loss. Um, so we monitor, hopefully we can get up to ninety, and that will protect us a little bit. Um, in the end, how will your bill be affected? I anticipate, I've done a lot of calculations on this. I anticipate in that thirty percent range over last winter, uh, your gas port and utility bill will be approximately thirty percent higher. That's the meteorologist part. Some things will change. Um, hopefully people don't, uh, get frustrated if it's a little more, um, a little more than that. So that's where we're at. I'd be glad to answer any questions. Um, we'll keep monitoring it. But I think, you know, the, the nice thing with the thirty percent increase is two thousand twenty winter, with the exception of the polar vortex, was some of the lowest prices in the last ten years. So the thirty percent's still on top of very, we're, we're not used to these prices 'cause it's been low for so long. Uh, but anyway, we're trying to control them. I think we're on top of it. Uh, we're working with Utility Gas Management to buy our gas. Uh, they're excellent. Um, they serve a lot of communities, so we feel really good. As good as any other, uh, gas, you know, uh, people in this business. So, um, unfortunately, prices are gonna be up, but I don't wanna hide from that fact. So conserve if you wanna keep those, uh, prices down, but anticipate thirty percent increase.
All right, any questions?
Just wanted to say thanks, Craig, for being upfront. I saw the, the social media announcement. I thought it was well said. Appreciate your, your attempt to, I would guess, a commodity. And, you know, it's a commodity. And all you can do is you're the best you can do, and nobody knows how it's gonna be, but I appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to Zellian in Code Enforcement.
I have one item tonight, Your Honor. Uh, in your pack is a permit summary report. Um, so I won't read the whole thing. It's fairly detailed. Um, but I can give you the, the highlight. So year to date, we have issued, uh, four hundred and sixty-seven permits. Last year to this date, we issued four hundred and thirty-eight. Uh, the total project cost year to date this year is sixteen million, five hundred and sixty thousand and some change. Last year to date was twenty million, two hundred and sixty-one thousand and some change. Uh, there's a little over three million dollar difference, and the reason for that is, uh, we had some very large projects last year, commercial Yenlin, uh, several commercial projects, which, uh, you know, that speaks for the over three million dollar difference in project cost. But the actual permits, we are, uh, more than last year.
All right, any questions? Comments?
A lot of numbers in that summary.
There is. I, I can, I can reduce that next time, but I thought maybe someone would find that interesting if they wanted to read before bedtime.
And hopefully we'll have some news of some new projects coming soon.
And there are some more projects in the works. I do, I, like, uh, Craig says, I do foresee that our last quarter will be more than last year's last quarter. 'Cause we do have some, uh, site plan reviews, some projects in the works right now.
All right. Uh, do any trustees have anything else?
Yes, Your Honor, if you remember last meeting, uh, I asked, uh, the board's, uh, opinion about offering a final round for the D C E O, uh, Economic Stability, uh, Grant Program. Uh, we have had three. This would be the fourth one. I also then pleaded, uh, on the camera that if anybody wanted to, uh, say that they wanted one or to apply, that they should send us an email. And I don't think Julie's received one. I haven't received one. I don't know if any of you have. So from my perspective, we could offer it, but I'm gonna guess that there's, uh, gonna be no takers on it. So again, your opinion, if you, uh, would like us to offer it, uh, we can, we can go through those efforts. Uh, but again, we might just be chasing the wind. I would say, uh, not to offer it because there hasn't been a cry for it, but, uh, your opinion, uh, matters, so.
Any comments?
What, what effort is there to offer if nobody, if nobody applies? Is there?
Well, we would, uh, tell the, uh, Morton Chamber EDC, uh, that they could post it to their website. We would post it to our website, uh, and I'm gonna say that that's probably about all that we would do.
Just creating, updating the grant document for new submitter dates and, um, our, we would not have to ask for a waiver from the state to change it because the initial waiver we got for this round three extended it through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. So, um, I, yeah, I would say just updating the grant and notifying.
I assume that we would stay with the maximum, uh, grant request being twenty-five thousand, uh, for somebody. And, uh, they can apply for expenses through, uh, this year through the end of the year, but they still have to show their sales, uh, you know, for last year being down twenty-five percent from the previous year. They also have to provide a lot of documentation, but, uh, if you can get twenty-five thousand dollars, it's worth it.
I mean, it sounds like there's not a lot of effort on the front end on our part, the chamber's part, to offer it. If no one applies, it's even less effort. Don't have to complete the documents.
We would just need to figure out where you would wanna cut off expenses. Um, I believe the last grant round, did we go through June? Expenses, I believe.
I think so.
Um, so we could extend that to, say, the end of October. Uh, make them do in, you know, they have to provide proof of payment and everything, so, you know, you need to give them enough time to get canceled checks and that type of thing back. So, I mean, we could extend it through the end of, make them do the end of November and approve them at our first meeting in December, if you wanted to.
So you have to update the document in order to put it on the website?
But just the due dates and that type of thing.
Okay.
And the, it, the dates, the expenses. And actually, the, you know, they can still go back to March first, twenty twenty.
Right.
And apply, you know, if they failed to do so anytime in the previous three rounds, they can still go back and ask if they, you know, currently, currently are making close to or as much as they did in twenty nineteen in, say, October of twenty twenty-one, they could still go back and apply for, say, March or April or those months in twenty twenty that may have been down. They could still apply for that if they wanted to, 'cause this allows for that.
And is there about ninety-three thousand available?
Right, ninety-three thousand, four hundred and some dollars.
How much, how many re-grant requests you might get, uh, but the maximum amount, the total that we could grant is ninety-three thousand and semi bucks.
And we did ask on that last that we could prorate the grants a maximum of twenty-five, but if we were to get enough for a hundred thousand dollars, and we could prorate each one so that everybody would get a share of the pot. Or you can do the first come, first served, I guess.
So consensus?
I think we oughta hop.
Okay, we'll do that. Okay.
What about the?
We'll get you the information.
What about the, the extension date? Do you think to November or prior to that?
You really can't do through November because they have to be able to provide proof of expenses and proof of payment. And proof of their revenue being down, which, you know, I don't know that there's that many businesses out there now that their revenue's down significantly, twenty-five percent or more from twenty nineteen, but, um...
So you think we'd look at the November, September thirtieth, which would be the end of the fourth order?
I mean, I would think October and October would still, you'd have sufficient time.
And we can make the applications due like November, I don't know, if the twentieth is a business day.
I just had you and Steve figure it out and put the dates in there.
Okay.
So the, uh, but the end, the end date of the grant would be October thirty-first.
Sounds good.
All right?
Yep.
All right, we'll do that.
All right. Trustees, any one of you have anything else to add? No executive session needed, so if we could have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.